Everyone, welcome to a special meeting to address the proposed 2023 city operations budget and the 2023 to 2027 capital program. Before we get started, as we do with official city business, of which this is one, we need to take a roll of our counselors who are here today. So we'll do that, and then we will stand for our pledge of allegiance, please. So Tamara, you can go ahead and read our roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Baranco?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
McCurus?
Here.
Nightcert? Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
All right, I would ask each stand for our pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good afternoon, council, city staff, members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today the proposed 2023 city operations budget and the 2023 to 2027 capital program. I want to thank leaders from across our city departments and our finance team for the time and the sweat equity investing in developing this budget. It's a lot of work. Your patience and persistence has been absolutely invaluable in building this budget and developing important groundwork for the years to come during a time of record growth in our city and region. I also want to thank the council for your partnership in meeting the needs of our growing community and for your service to our community. Signs of population growth and economic investment are all across our city. Last year, we saw a record 7,000 people move to our community. The Burwell family is one of the many thousands who decided to make their home in Sioux Falls. They relocated their business, Burwell Enterprises, from Minneapolis to Sioux Falls last year and were drawn here because of our community's growth and our overall appeal. The Burwells are looking forward to leasing the top floors of the Steel District when it opens next year. What I hear from people time and time again is that they are seeking out Sioux Falls because of the exceptional quality of life in our city and our state. Whether you are a young professional, a business owner, a retiree, or a parent with kids, Sioux Falls is a great place to live. We continue to be nationally recognized for our quality of life. That includes being named the best small place for business and careers by Forbes, the top city for young professionals, one of the best places to live in the U.S., and one of the best-run cities in the country. This last recognition speaks to the city's history of smart fiscal spending and use of taxpayer dollars. During what is a challenging economic environment right now and during a time when we continue to experience rapid growth, that approach is even more important today. Today's budget proposal has been designed to include strategic investments for us to continue managing that growth in a fiscally responsible way. There's a focus on infrastructure needs to support our community's growing footprint, along with an emphasis on public safety and impactful quality-of-life initiatives. There is also a people and personnel-focused plan that focuses on strengthening the high-caliber city services and quality of life that makes Sioux Falls a great place to call home. Before we dive into the budget proposal, let's consider how the city's longstanding fiscal stewardship, along with strategy, innovation, and collaboration, has led us to where we are today. We have seen an unprecedented level of funding from the federal government in recent years. This has provided us with opportunities to make one-time investments for generational change. Thanks to the city's strong economic position, we were able to bring forward these one-time investments through the Sioux Falls for All Plan that will leave a lasting impact on our community. This strategy earmarked more than $73 million of investments for children, families, and neighborhoods, infrastructure, jobs, and the economy, and making city government more resilient and more responsive. One aspect that makes Sioux Falls so special, time and time again, is our One Sioux Falls mindset that allows us to achieve more together. A prime example of this are the many public-private partnerships that are providing us with the opportunity to accomplish even more for our community, diversify our economy, and enhance our city's quality of life. Here's a snapshot of the investments the city committed to this past year. Construction of a cybersecurity lab through Dakota State University, an investment that will augment our economy for decades. Expansion of the downtown River Greenway to improve the west bank of the Big Sioux River that will be coordinated with exciting private sector development at the Steel District. A new refrigerated skate ribbon and inclusive playground at Jacobson Plaza, a community recreation and gathering space in the heart of our downtown. We're scheduled to break ground this fall and open in the fall of 2023. Development of a public safety training campus that will equip our public safety teams to continue providing top-notch services to Sioux Falls. We broke ground on this campus last fall and anticipate completion in the fall of 2023. And as a continued mark of our strong fiscal stewardship, what I call the Dave Ramsey Plan, we paid off $25 million in debt early. Thank you to the council for supporting these projects, along with many others that are making Sioux Falls stronger, safer, and more vibrant. I believe our team's budget proposal puts our city on the right course for the future, a course that accounts for our record growth, the economic variations, and shared values through this One Sioux Falls framework that continues to inform our investments. This budget is more than numbers. It encompasses our community values. Through this budget, we're responsible for making strategic investments that will ensure our quality of life stays solid in Sioux Falls as one of the best places in the nation to live, work, and raise a family for future generations. In the proposal before you today, we have continued priority investments around this framework, including a new emphasis on kids and families. This focus speaks to our renewed commitment to make investments that will benefit kids and families. We recognize that communities that prioritize kids and families are strong and successful. When kids and families are supported, we all benefit from a safer and more vibrant Sioux Falls. Across the nation and here in Sioux Falls, residents and businesses are seeing the impact of inflation at the gas pump, the grocery store, daycare costs, and in other daily living expenses. The city is not immune to these cost impacts. Considering today's economic climate, it's even more important that we, as a city, plan ahead to make wise strategic investments to help shield us from tomorrow's economic volatility. Easy for me to say. We must be intentional to ensure our resources are being directed to the pressing issues facing us today, and at the same time, make investments that position the city for success in the years ahead. We've made several deliberate decisions with this in mind. We've hit pause on the construction of some new and expanded projects throughout this plan, recognizing the impact of cost escalation. We have given thoughtful consideration to balancing maintenance of our current infrastructure and facilities with investments in new infrastructure demands due to this growth we are experiencing. And finally, we continue to maintain conservative revenue expectations with a projected 4% sales tax growth in 2023 to ensure we maintain that solid financial position. It is critical that we take a prudent approach that recognizes the volatility within the economy and aligns our revenues to foundational investments. Today, I'm proposing a total 2023 budget of $646.2 million, supported through a variety of revenues, including taxes, charges for goods and services, grants, contributions, and other financing. Removing our internal service and trust fund, nearly two-thirds goes to providing essential services that residents expect each day. Services like public safety, an efficient street system, and water and wastewater services. Our city team is committed to carrying out these services and many others at the highest level. The total 2023 proposed city budget includes the first year of the capital program and invests $187.2 million in capital improvements and equipment. On average, over 40% of the five-year capital program supports highways and streets. Sioux Falls' rapid population growth is one of the driving forces behind these budget priorities, ranging from wastewater needs to additional public safety team members to arterial corridor expansion. As a city team, we are intentional in developing the right strategy to manage this growth that you see on the screen. Beyond our sheer population growth, our city's growth can be seen through other indicators. In permits issued for housing, year-to-date, we're only 44 units away from surpassing last year's record total of $3,024. Our building permit growth today is at a staggering $994 million year-to-date, and we anticipate hitting $1 billion for the second year in a row, possibly later today or tomorrow. Billion dollars in building permits by the middle of July. It is critical that we continue to take a collaborative, strategic approach in our long-term planning. This includes intentionality in our land acquisitions. To guide those efforts, we have formed what we call a Strategic Land Acquisition Team, or you may hear us call it the SLAT team, to identify future sites for public services. This is just one example of the steps we are taking to proactively address the future needs of Sioux Falls. Our city team models the One Sioux Falls approach to solving problems, and I want to introduce to you a few teams that are doing just that. Recently, sidewalk compliance had the potential to create a large headache for residents and for the city. Instead of developing a patchwork solution from team members in their individual departments, we worked collaboratively across the organization to develop the best solutions for our residents. This is a prime example of how collaborative culture creates a greater impact for Sioux Falls. Another guiding principle for us as a city team is prioritizing initiatives that keep Sioux Falls investable. You'll hear us say that phrase a lot, "keep Sioux Falls investable." That means investing in the right projects, the right programs, and putting in place the right policies and incentives to ensure businesses want to invest here and people want to make their home here. We are seeing continued investment across the community, but one place where that is clearly visible is in our downtown. The River Greenway and our downtown bridges are popular for runners, walkers, cyclists, and Instagrammers. Recently, the Eighth Street Bridge was given a facelift, and we will soon be updating Sixth Street Bridge to the north. We will be replacing the 47-year-old bridge and adding streetscaping from the Big Sioux to Weber Avenue, as you see on the screen here. As I have shared before, we are proposing to rename the bridge Unity Bridge to honor leaders who have demonstrated the community spirit that makes Sioux Falls a welcoming home to all. The skyline is literally changing daily downtown, with the hallmark investments being made at Steel District and Sheraput, too. Multi-million-dollar investments like these are happening downtown thanks to many community leaders who see the value in investing and transforming the heart of our city. Updates to the River Greenway will complement the development taking place at the Steel District. Our community is experiencing this revitalization because the city continues to cultivate partnerships and invest in downtown arts and infrastructure. Along with many community residents, our team is also investing energy into planning downtown's future. The 2035 Downtown Plan will envision downtown's development for the next decade, and we are reimagining our city's namesake park through the Falls Park Master Plan to establish Falls Park as a sought-after destination across the region and country. This plan will build on the exciting developments happening at Jacobson Plaza. And there's the most recent Jacobson Plaza renderings on the screen in front of you. As we plan downtown's next decade, increasing density continues to be important, along with growth among housing, workforce, hospitality, retail, restaurant, and tourism sectors. Workforce and housing are two especially important areas of focus, both for Sioux Falls and communities across the country. Keeping the downtown market attractive is one area that allows us to retain and attract a highly skilled workforce, helping move the needle on specific sectors where our workforce is experiencing pressure. Employers are experiencing workforce shortages across industries, from healthcare to education and manufacturing. My office and city team will continue to build on the partnerships we've cultivated with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation, Southeast Tech, the Chamber of Commerce, and others to address these demands that we are experiencing. We also know that childcare challenges are having a big impact on workforce. Through the newly-formed Childcare Collaborative, my office has helped convene community partners who will soon be addressing tangible solutions to give more families access to safe and affordable childcare. Along with those workforce concerns, housing is another area of pressing need in our community right now. It's been an area of focus within the One Sioux Falls framework since I took office in 2018. The 2026 Housing Action Plan continues to guide our efforts to tackle housing challenges. We are focused on the areas of land, workforce, public incentives and partnerships, our design and building standards, and infrastructure. Along with our partners in the private sector, we are making advancement in these areas, and I want to highlight a few success stories for you today. We are working to ensure land is available for development to support our community's future growth. We are planning for our next major sanitary sewer extension on the west side of Sioux Falls to position the city for the next 100 years of growth. Second, we are excited to share that we will be bringing forward our first affordable single-family housing TIF, which will lead to more new affordable homes. This week, we received the application from Nielsen Development, and we'll be bringing it forward for consideration in the coming months. And through the Housing Division's Single Family Rehabilitation Program, we are supporting reinvestment in existing homes by providing financial assistance to homeowners for property maintenance. Through this program, we are able to transform and keep homes investable. In this example, the homeowner shared, quote, "The Sioux Falls Housing Division was instrumental in helping me restore my 1890 home. With their assistance and guidance, Sioux Falls will be a more attractive city to live in," end quote. The city is also leveraging one-time federal dollars to help low-income families with home and sidewalk repairs, up to $5,000 in financial assistance. Since starting the program this spring, the city has approved more than 80 applications for a total of almost $100,000. It's just another great example of the way the city is helping keep Sioux Falls investable. We must continue to think innovatively and capitalize on partnerships to address our community's housing needs. The launch of the Veterans Community Project, which broke ground in June, has been a testament to collaboration and critical thinking. An absolute home run, this project developed from the city's inaugural Onward Leadership Program in 2019, led by these gentlemen on the screen. This is a true One Sioux Falls project that will support veterans experiencing homelessness in our community. The city continues to invest in efforts that strengthen our ability to recruit and retain employees who provide core city services. As part of that, this spring, we rolled out the Employer of Choice Plan. This included a retention incentive for all full-time employees, accelerated vacation accruals, and investments to engage in a compensation and benefit study. The data from that will guide us to ensure we are making responsible and prudent decisions during these variable economic times. Together, these efforts will help the city of Sioux Falls remain a top employer of choice in the region. For 2023, to keep up with the continued growth of our community, we also have the need for additional city team members to ensure delivery of vital city services. The 2023 budget includes funding for 30 new full-time positions, 26 funded through the general fund, and four within our enterprise funds. The city also relies on our part-time employees to deliver services across our community, including our pools, libraries, park system. To ensure we remain competitive in the market for these positions, we have adjusted our part-time pay scale across departments. This has helped us fill challenging positions like lifeguards and be in a position to open all city pools this summer for the first time since 2019. Several positions have direct ties to the growth that's being felt across our city. For example, the proposed budget includes funding for two new permit texts to keep up with the service demands within our Building Services Division. Finally, as Sioux Falls continues to become known as an arts and culture hub in the region, we are devoting more resources to advancing arts across the community through an arts-specialist position. This position was specifically recommended by the Arts Task Force in 2020, and I'll continue to advocate for the role the arts play in building a diverse and a thriving community. The 2023 budget continues to support our outstanding employees as well, and I'm proud of the work they do in making sure our fundamental city services are delivered 24/7. I hope that, like me, you're proud of the work our city employees have done during challenging times like the recent storms. We've seen city employees step up time and time again to help families who are in crisis as a true mark of the heart of a public servant in action. Recognizing the importance of our emergency management work, this proposed budget includes funding for another employee in fire rescue who will be focused on creating redundancy and succession in emergency management. This is an incredibly important role, given the more frequent demand for standing up our Emergency Operations Center. So I want you to consider this. In the 25-year history of the city's incident management system, the Emergency Operations Center has opened 14 times. Seven of those times have been in the past four years. We continue to depend on skilled team members to carry out this critical work. It's no surprise that the Sioux Falls landfill has been getting a lot of use as well over the past several months due to our recent storms. As our region continues to experience growth, the landfill continues to serve more customers, and now is the right time to make updates. We are proposing updates, including a new three-lane scale house and an expanded public drop-off area that will streamline the experience for customers. As our community grows in population and footprint, we also must maintain a focus on both maintaining our existing assets while investing in new street and utility infrastructure. As in prior years, the largest portion of the city's 2023 budget is designated for infrastructure. This includes critical investments in our roads, utilities, and continued expansion of our regional water reclamation plant, a foundational project to support our city's future growth. Here's a current image of the excavation that is underway. Over the course of the next three years, you're going to see this massive project come to reality. We're also continuing to invest in our water resources to meet the growing needs of our community. In September, we will plan to open the first large horizontal collector well since 2010. That's the well you see on the screen right there. And the city is also in the process of designing for another well. Between those two wells, this will provide us with an additional 9.4 million gallons of much-needed water per day. Our city's road network is the largest city asset, valued at just over $1 billion. The preservation and repair and maintenance of our streets continues to be a top budgetary priority, as reflected in this program. The proposed capital program recommends the council adopt $345.9 million for roadway projects. This is an increase of nearly $50 million over the last plan, equating to a 20% increase over that prior five-year capital program. Thanks to our continued long-term investments in the city's roadway network, we have one of the highest pavement condition ratings in the nation. This strategic investment has led to roads that are at a higher level of quality compared to other communities our size in the nation. This year's budget continues that commitment to our street system, and our projected street rehab and reconstruction for 2023 proposes to touch more than 700 blocks throughout our city. Roadway projects in 2023 and in the coming years will span across the city. We continue to add new street lane miles every year to meet the demands of our growing community and maintain existing corridors. Cliff Avenue is one of our busiest arterial streets and one of our top traffic corridors. We'll be widening Cliff Avenue south from 85th for a half mile in anticipation of the Harrisburg Freshman Academy, which, as you can see in the picture, is up in the upper right of the screen. On the east side of the city, construction on a new section of Sixth Street from Foss Avenue to Veterans Parkway will complete a missing link, providing access to new development and improved travel in this area. Our next diverging diamond interchange project will begin next year at Benson Road and Interstate 229. After years of planning with the state of South Dakota, this project is now moving forward. This interchange is a critical component for the industrial park on the interchange's west side, with Benson Road carrying around 15,000 vehicles every single day. This will be a large, two-year project in partnership with the state of South Dakota, but will provide much-needed capacity to better serve this growing area of the city. This next project will be transformational for our region. Enjoy the video as I talk through this, because I think it's one of the coolest things you'll see in terms of infrastructure. The southern expansion of Veterans Parkway will bring many benefits, including improving traffic flow and providing better connectivity between Sioux Falls and neighboring communities. We also anticipate significant economic investment as a result of this project. The corridor will be constructed in four segments. The goal is to complete two-mile sections each year to finish the 8.5 miles by 2027. The entire corridor, as you see, will be six lanes with a center median, a pedestrian and bike path on the south side, and traffic signals at every mile intersection. There will also be seven side-path underpasses to accommodate safe travel for cyclists and pedestrians. Construction will begin in 2023 on the first segment, which will run between Western Minnesota and Cliff Avenue. Large-scale projects like this depend on incredible partnerships to get done, and we are extremely thankful for the state, the feds, for their support in this project, and that will be an integral part of our region's transportation network for the next several decades and beyond. It's such a long stretch of road. There, you can see where it ends up at 57th and South Veterans Parkway connects. Mark Carter said we're going to complete it about that fast, too. If there's one thing that gives me hope for our community... If there's one thing that gives me hope for our community, it's our next generation. I notice it every time I visit a school, a community rec center, spend time on our trail system. So much of our work in city government can get caught up in the details and the minutia, but staying focused on the future of our community and making the community better for them, that's something that no one can argue with. Because when our kids and families thrive, the community benefits. That's why we've added the new emphasis within the One Sioux Falls framework to bring greater attention to and prioritize projects that benefit kids and families. That includes improvements in our pools, making our transit system free for kids year-round, and investing in our parks to increase access to recreational opportunities. This is legacy work that stands to positively impact families and our entire community. From our recreation trail to our pool system and libraries, our city's amenities bring joy to kids and families across this community. I see that with my own three kids, just how much these services enhance their quality of life, and we want all kids in Sioux Falls to have equitable access to recreational offerings. One project in particular that is helping to achieve that is the new splash pad at Hayward Park in northeast Sioux Falls, which is expected to open yet this year. Right now, kids in that neighborhood, they have to travel two miles for any water recreation. This new splash pad is going to change that, and the park updates will also include a dog park and a walking loop that will ultimately create a community gathering space. Knowing how much our community loves our park system, we are asking residents for their input as we consider updates to our existing aquatics facilities. We'll begin a community engagement process this summer as we explore options for the future of Sioux Falls' aquatic system. We plan to fund those investments with a quality-of-life bond in 2023 and 2024. The city takes a very thoughtful approach to bonding for projects. It only bonds for major infrastructure projects that have widespread community impact like this. I encourage our residents to get involved in this process in the year ahead. After the falls, if there's one amenity that rises to the top of what residents and visitors use and talk about in our community, it's our trail system. Our community's recreation trail and parks are second to none in this region, perhaps even in the nation. We have continued commitment to expanding our recreation trail and have a new segment planned from Lean Park to Bonson Avenue. This trail will eventually lead all the way to Grape Bear. We also recognize the importance of providing a wide array of outdoor recreational options for residents and for visitors. Through a partnership with the Sioux Falls Skate Park Association, we'll be creating a skate park at Nelson Park to provide a safe designated space for youth and adults to enjoy this creative outdoor pursuit. For the past three years, we have diligently worked to identify options for expanding service through our city's public transit system. The data we have collected in our pilot programming is the anchor for the development of a plan my team will bring forward in early 2023. This approach will better meet the needs of our community by moving transit toward a hybrid system of fixed routes and increased on-demand services. The goal for these updates is to make public transportation more accessible to our residents with more efficient, expanded services. As we adjust our public transit model, we are giving more intentional consideration to designing it, again, with kids and families in mind. This means getting the next generation familiar with public transit today. As part of that, we'll be developing an educational and a communication strategy geared towards kids and families on how to access and use our public transit system. In addition, to help attract and retain kids and families as users of transit, as mentioned, we're moving forward with the plan to make transit free for kids year-round. A family-friendly community is also a safe community. Our administration's commitment to public safety has been and will remain a priority in each of my proposed budgets. Those investments include funding in 2026 for a new fire station in northeast Sioux Falls to support our community's growth. Our police department has found success with some officers starting shifts at a report-to-work location in southwest Sioux Falls that we currently lease. This budget includes funding to acquire this station in 2025 and construct an additional station in southeast Sioux Falls in 2027. Our 2023 budget also includes seven additional full-time employees between the Sioux Falls Police Department and Sioux Falls Fire Rescue. Our public safety team's positive impact on the community goes beyond their daily work. City teams are investing in the community through programs like the Sound the Alarm Program, which is helping make homes safer by providing and installing smoke alarms to those who need them. Sioux Falls Fire Rescue has also taken a fun approach to safety education. Kids in classrooms across the city are learning safety messages from Blaze the Dog and other puppets throughout our safety programming. Camp Postcard is one example of how our team members are building positive interactions between law enforcement and our youth. During this week-long summer camp, law enforcement officers served as camp counselors for middle-school students. Fun, engaging, team-building activities were designed to help students develop self-esteem, leadership skills, and learn about law enforcement. You see our chief just get dusted there by those kids? Students echoed resounding thanks to law enforcement officers and shared comments, including, quote, "Thank you from my heart. Thank you for helping make camp a reality." For these students, many who are facing extremely challenging circumstances, the lessons and memories made at camp will have a long-term impact. Events like this that foster positive relationships will create a safer, stronger, and more vibrant Sioux Falls for families and the next generation. For the upcoming fiscal year and the next capital program, I'm confident we have proposed a responsible budget that both responds to today's needs while keeping Sioux Falls investable in the decades to follow. As you review the plan, know that every program and funding priority is being presented with a continued focus on fiscal stewardship while keeping in mind the economic volatility of the day. This budget demonstrates the determination to make our city a better place to live, better place to work, to visit, and to do so in a strategic, fiscally-responsible manner. We are improving services to make Sioux Falls safer. We're continuing to make Sioux Falls a destination for jobs and investment. We're investing in roadwork and infrastructure projects while tackling challenges like housing and workforce. Finally, we're investing in upgrades to our pools, parks, and recreation trail, all priorities that will benefit kids and families. We must continue our One Sioux Falls approach, working together to strengthen our community and further building upon our resiliency and our vibrancy. Within each chapter of our city's story, generations of residents have experienced challenges but have also acted on opportunities, ultimately moving Sioux Falls forward, and our chapter is no different. I'm confident in the community leaders, residents, and partners who join us daily to continue to partner with us to lead us through the next chapter in our story. So in the weeks ahead, our team will present a more detailed look at the proposed 2023 budget through our budget hearings as well as the five-year capital program. I look forward to partnering with the council to make strategic investments that continue to move our city forward. Thank you for your time today, and may God bless Sioux Falls in the year ahead.
Do we adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second, captain.
All right, motion is second to adjourn. I didn't know we had to do that. All's in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Posed. All right, we're adjourned. Have a good day.